And where the items gonna be?
They'll be in the community room, so we'll come up with a system where we'll be able to check who's, check people's ID, ask them to stand back, put their items on the table and next to the door. And then they can just pick them up on the way out the door.
Okay, and they would have to presumably be wearing masks when they did that?
Correct, that's that's part of our safety plan.
Ike, are you planning on drafting a separate document for patrons outlining all these pieces for them?
What the expectations are absolutely, and it will have to be, you know, kind of continuously updated. We're working on, Jen Ferris has been working on kind of a bookmark and some information for people about exactly how the contactless pickup might work.
Right, and what dates they can get, what kinds of materials, if there's any restrictions or because I can't imagine asking someone to read this whole safety plan to determine how.
Yeah, no, no. And there will be a whole procedure for about how to place the holds, what the, how to make an appointment, et cetera. And they've been working on that, Jen, but the Gens both have Jen Ferris and Jen O'Grady asking.
Okay.
Does anybody else have a question about that? Some of this is going to be safety plan related, so we can bring it up in a minute. But there is a motion pending to approve June 22 as a target reopening date for contactless pickup.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? A motion passes.
And just for Carmen, for the record, I wanted to let her know that Janet Lindner is not here today.
Okay, so the second item on the agenda is a request.
Right, to declare some additional titles as essential as we prepare for our reopening. There should also be an action item because there were certain titles that were declared essential in the initial public health emergency plan. And so we'd be looking to add to that list cleaners and library clerk and senior clerk. These are the folks who work in circulation to be able, so part of this coordinating with with the other libraries and sales and MVLS is that there are currently amongst all of our libraries, about 270,000 items checked out. And so not all of them are traveling between branches, but there are a lot of things that we have in the building and that we anticipate getting back that we'll have to go into the delivery. And a lot of our things that we know are circulating out of it, there are about 26,000 items currently checked out from here that will have to make their way back. And so getting the clerks in to check items in and to prepare them for delivery would be important before we could begin the the direct service to the public.
Well, that's good. Anybody have any questions about that? Do we have a motion to declare additional titles as essential to prepare for reopening? Cleaner, library clerk, senior library clerk?
Did you say you need, did you make a motion?
Need a motion, sorry.
Yeah.
Okay, go.
No, go for it, Steve.
I would make a motion then that we declare additional titles of cleaner and library clerk and senior library clerk essential for reopening.
I second the.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Motion passes. Okay, I guess we're out to the meat of the matter.
So this document looks substantially different from the initial draft that you got on Friday. It has a lot of the same information. It's been reformatted slightly and then re-formatted again. We've gone over it with a fine tooth comb. And it's really based on guidance from the New York State Department of Health, from the CDC, from OSHA, from our lawyers, although it still has not yet been reviewed by lawyers and insurance people. But but that's where most of the guidance is coming from. And then I did want to acknowledge a couple of other documents that we've been using as models. And one is the the initial draft of the plan that was created by the Clifton Park Half Moon Public Library and a document from the Toledo Lucas County Public Library. And so we've borrowed a lot of information from that. And then we've juggled it around a little bit. And so and this is where we where we currently are.
Yeah, my understanding is that there was no industry specific template plan for libraries in New York.
So that is correct.
And so hobbling a little bit.
And so we're using the guidance that was provided for initially for phase one contactless retail operations. And then there was guidance that was released late last Friday evening for phase two retail. It actually doesn't look much different from the phase one retail model, but we're using that. And then there was a combination of retail and office work. Because based on, if we just go through here, based on information from, even get it in here, from OSHA, you know, they rank industries as, you know, low risk, medium risk, high risk, extreme risk. And we feel like, and somehow it's not in this draft, it was in the draft earlier today.
Low exposure, medium exposure risk.
Exactly, and so we've determined that since we're this combination of of office work for support staff and and then the front line staff providing reference readers advisory, direct public service that we would fall into that medium risk category.
Okay, I have, I spoke, I told you that I, Ike, I think, and I don't know who else, that I did sit through and ask the lawyer seminar. And so there were just a few things that I had. And then I thought maybe, you know, I would just bring up some of my really questions or just thoughts. And maybe we could discuss them going forward if anybody wants to jump in or. So and then some of this, some of this, I'm going to, some of the things I wanted to talk about are, I think, in here. I'm not sure how clearly they're in here, and frankly, I'm working off your earlier drafts, so.
All right.
Okay, so I think we have the idea, some of this is coming from just, you know, what what they were suggesting as best practices, which is to have, first of all, have a safety plan committee. So I don't know if we want to identify the members of that committee in here. But I think, you know, like where maybe places where you say management, maybe you mean safety plan committee? I don't know, or, you know, but that it might want to be consistent throughout. And of course, it needs to be reassessed. I don't know if you're planning to reassess it weekly or every two weeks. But obviously, that, and I think there is the evolving nature of it is kind of in there. I think we've already, the need for professional input, I think you've already touched base on the fact that we really need to send it to the insurance carrier and our attorneys to take a take a look at before it can be finally approved. One of the things that the person running this seminar thought would be, could be a liability problem for a library was don't adopt a policy that you're not going to enforce. And don't adopt a policy that you can enforce, because those could, those kinds of things are can be the basis for liability later on. With respect to enforcement, I don't know if there's language in there, and maybe there is, and I missed it. And I, but we've, our policies and our code of conduct will need to be temporarily amended to be consistent with this policy. I don't know that we have to go through and identify every policy or every code of conduct. But to the extent that they're inconsistent with with this document, you know, we have to make clear that that's what governs. And I think staff need to be able to enforce the this, you know, amended code of conduct. For example, you know, obviously, you know, the one that jumps out most is what if somebody doesn't wear a mask? I'm sure you've thought about that. I mean, what do you, what do you think?
And so we do have in this policy, so there, so I think that there, as far as patron behavior, there are two areas where it where it could become problematic. And one is the mask wearing and one is the social distancing. We do have in the plan, you know, methods, a requirement that when the public are in the building, they're wearing a mask. The, but we've also given a caveat that if an accommodation is required, we may have to, we may have to make it, although there does seem to be some information to the contrary of that, that I'm not sure that we want to enforce. So the governor put out an executive order late last week saying that businesses are allowed to not allow people in the building if they're wearing masks. What we have decided that we will do is we have a supply of disposable masks that will ask people to to wear if they don't come in their own before we let them in the building. Or another thing that we might potentially do is if someone shows up for their appointment to retrieve their items and they're not wearing a mask, we may ask them to wait outside and retrieve materials for them and bring them out. And, you know, and leave them at a socially distanced, agreed upon location.
So I guess in that regard, signage will be very important.
It will, and that's addressed in the plan, lots of signage, both for staff and for and for patrons throughout the building, on the outside of the building, and very likely by the curb. We had originally in our phased reopening plan thought that we wanted to do some kind of curbside pickup. But we think that this, having people come in in a straight line and out in one door and out the other is probably easier to manage and less problematic in terms of of the whole parking lot issue.
Ike, I had a couple of things in there. One is you have enough masks or do you, is there another reason also we should be working with the county as another distribution center of masks?
So the.
The town hall or city hall, which since our city hall is not so organized right now or anything?
So we, for for staff right now, we do have a supply of five disposable or not reusable cloth masks that we got from the city. We also have a large supply of gloves. We have face shields in addition to the cloth face coverings for everyone. So I feel that for initially out of, and we also have purchased and installed Plexi at service points, although it's going to be a while before we are serving people from those service points. I think we are in a good position out of the gate. We have a good supply of soap and hand sanitizer, sorry about that. It's under a pile of paper on my desk, so.
My question is more, is there a reason to partner with the county so we have them to distribute to patrons?
You know, I've thought about that. The situation right now is that the news that we're getting from the county is that they don't have enough supply of face masks to provide to libraries and other service providers in the county. So the county just recently said they're they're out of face masks.
And then my other question in there was that you made the remark about face shields that masks must still be worn. And it was my sense of what I read in the Department of Health guidance on that in April is that you can just wear a face shield, that you did not need to have a mask as well.
We can certainly double check that the the guidance seems to.
Yeah, I, but partly say that because we have some employees who have really been struggling with the mask. And so we had to look into that. And it's my guess that we're going to have more patrons that are going to be coming around. And and they have some guidance around how big it has to be and all of that in those executive orders.
Right, and and I know especially as the weather gets warmer and, you know, and as I've been demonstrating them for staff, the combination of the face shield and the mask together, it gets very warm under there.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we'll double check the the guidance about that.
So is your plan to actually mark along the ramp six foot distances so that that is really clear to patrons?
And so our our plan is, you know, if we get to the point where we have that many people coming in. But our plan initially is to schedule appointments in 15 minute increments so that we shouldn't really have that many people in the building at a time and have them come in the Putnam door and down the corridor and mark those six foot intervals down the the interior hallway and then through the community room at the exit. And when we get to the point when we have patrons back in the building, we do have a plan to do the one way through the stacks and marking, you know, one way paths for people when we get to a point where we where they have access to the collections.
So it's several people per 15 minutes? Is that, is there a certain number?
One person, one person every 15 minutes.
You don't think that'll get, do you have a rough sense of how many people you'd be expecting to? That seems low, doesn't it seem like there'll be more requests than that allows you to fulfill?
Yes, so so people, so it won't be, we're not anticipating a same day service model, so.
Sure, sure.
You know, it may be several days and we may, we may start out that way and then decide that we can handle more. And if we can handle more, you know, be able to schedule things more frequently. We've also had some discussions about what the hours of operation will be for that service. Once we start, right now, we're all operating from nine to five. But we're looking at, now that people are going back to work, to be able to alternate, alter that schedule a little bit to maybe do 10 to six hours for the public so that, you know, people have some after work time and then maybe sometime on a Saturday. We do think it's going to be a while before, we know that people are eager to get back into the library. We also know that there are a lot of people who are still nervous about going to the public. And we know that we have a lot of staff who are very, very nervous about about the.
Is your one person every 15 minutes based on, what is that, what is the reasoning behind that? Given the square footage of the building and the amount of people who could potentially check somebody out with this distance process?
It's in order to keep the the number of people in the building minimal and to be able to provide this this one way in and one way out as an alternative to curbside. So to keep the, to keep the traffic flowing and and also to be consistent with the with the service model of our of our peers. And so this was a a model that was developed in consultation with the other libraries and sales, the big ones at least.
And if you find you can move faster, I suppose you could change that easily enough.
Right, Jen F, do you want to talk about that at all?
I'm just nodding my head, that is correct. I'm actually, probably for our next meeting in a week, I'll have the data about what our potential workload is going to be. But we have to think about staffing, which is going to be very limited, and our capacity as staff to be able to do the work. And we're gonna, yeah, it should be easily be able to go up or down on the number of appointments we have based on demand, but also based on staff at any given time. So we're going to start off slow and see how many people we can safely move through the building daily as well without staff, too much staff intervention. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Work in progress a little bit.
It is a work in progress.
Yeah, and there's new information every day and every plan that we made yesterday is different from the plan that we're making for today for tomorrow. And then, so another thing that we may wind up doing with this emergency floor repair that may put a wrench into our our, in the Putnam Street door and out the community's door, as we may devise something where people come in or out through the cafe exit, the problem, and then out the community room exit. And that might, and that could be another reason why we want to keep the numbers small so that they're not crossing paths directly at those doors, because they they really are practically side by side.
So I noticed that you affirmatively state that the library will not keep a log of patrons who enter the library. Is there any particular reason for that? Is that the privacy concerns?
So it is a privacy concern, and I think it is also, you know, difficult to manage. And actually, the the guidance for retail says that it's not a requirement to keep to track customers. We will keep a lag, a log of, you know, contractors, visitors, staff. But but there there is a privacy concern with 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 patrons. How we anticipate it will go, if there is a need to inform people, we'll take our guidance from the from the Health Department and we would anticipate that they would make an announcement similar to the ones you've heard about. There were some restaurants in Albany, like if you went through the drive through at this place between these hours on this day, you may have come in potentially in contact with someone.
I guess I'd been wondering whether or not people would just right out of their own, you know, sense of caution, just put their name down if they were wanted to, but maybe that's just another level of complication. You know, people could just say, if, you know, for contract pay tracing purposes, if you'd like to leave your name, there's no obligation or whatever. But maybe that's just too complicated.
It's certainly something we could consider, could consider to ask people if they wanted to volunteer. Yeah, you know, it's it's hard to anticipate what people's reactions to all of this are going to be, whether people are going to continue to be concerned about their safety or whether the, or their privacy.
Yeah, people are going into stores now without doing that. I don't, I don't think it would be very well received, I guess, I don't.
Well, I don't think, yeah, certainly something we couldn't mandate, it would have to be a purely voluntary basis, you know. You're right, I mean, no, everyone's, no one's doing that now, no one's asking for that. So this is kind of a it says mandatory health screening is required for employees. Have you guys been able to, I haven't looked at your newest draft, but I was wondering if that's been firmed up again or?
It has been.
Entrepreneurs might want to take a look at that, but, you know.
And we're looking at a screening that is essentially a questionnaire with four questions. We have decided that we don't think that we want to be taking people's temperatures.
You're referring to staff right now?
To anybody.
Okay.
But the but to staff, to staff, I, but.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, and so the questions would be, and actually, the guidance is that we ask staff and not and not customers about whether they've had any symptoms in the past 14 days, whether they've had a positive test or whether they've been in close contact with a confirmed or suspected case in the past 14 days or whether they currently have a fever of 100.4 or higher. And then there's, you know, and our preference at that point with staff would be if they answer yes to any of those, to stay home. But there's a a potentially complicating whole another layer of questions about some of the symptoms of COVID-19 are similar to allergy symptoms, for example. So we've had a pretty long discussion about who wants to be the arbiter of whether that's okay.
After the screening of deciding somebody's going to stay, I mean?
Right. Or or even be allowed to report to work that day.
What is the situation with testing? Is there any guidance around, I mean, I know I've been seeing some things that like hairdressers are going to be required to get tested every two weeks because they're engaged to the public. Are there any protocols coming out in this respect?
There was nothing in the in the two pieces of guidance that we looked at from Empire State Development and the Health Department for retail and office work that was not a, not part of the guidance.
Okay.
So if if someone was presented with symptoms or somebody makes a decision, I mean, do they, do they have to go to this isolation room or, I mean?
Yeah, we've, we've eliminated the isolation room. And this plan that, so what we're going to ask is if anybody presents with any of the symptoms, don't go to a room, go home or or call your doctor and arrange for testing.
I'm going to miss the isolation. Tara, did you have any particular concerns?
Yes. Um, from a press standpoint, I pretty much agree that, and I hope that my audio comes through. Okay, I keep getting a thing that my internet connection is unstable, so I hope I don't freeze up for you. But it's okay for us to conduct a questionnaire. It's okay for us to ask people to complete that questionnaire before they even come on site. So while there might be a technological solution for achieving that, I'm advocating for at least to start a tech paper solution. So basically, providing copies of this questionnaire to employees so that they can complete them at home, come with them to the work site, completed, send them to their directly supervising employee for review. And that supervisor would then can. And that supervisor would then confirm that they've reviewed the questionnaires for each of their employees and then forward them on to me for record retention. So anyone, and there would be instructions on that questionnaire that would guide people, letting them know that if they are not able to answer in a way that would make them clear to come to work, that they should stop, not report to work, but instead call their supervisor or human resources. So for instance, to the question of have you had any of these symptoms? Fever, coughing, runny nose, congestion, dizziness, so on, so if they do answer yes, then stop, don't come to work, call. At that point, an interactive discussion has to happen because if, as Ike said, the symptoms are also typical of hay fever or allergies, the discussion between the supervisor and the employee or human resources and the employee would ascertain that, you know, are these symptoms that you've historically had when you've had allergies? And if the answer is yes, and there's no fever present, there are no other conditions that are truly symptomatic of COVID, then the decision might be made to have the employee report. But I think the part that we haven't yet sussed out is what is our tolerance for encouraging people to report to work? And what is the decision making going to look like? Because I don't think any one of us wants to be in the position of trying to make a decision about encouraging people to come to work on the basis of there being some symptoms but not others, potentially putting other people at risk. But then also on the other side, erring on the side of being over cautious and then having that have impacts on absenteeism and our ability to serve. So that's a discussion that's still ongoing. That's my concern. The process, I think we can figure out, it's the decision making when we're presented with the questions about, well, yeah, I have a runny nose today. Now what?
Yeah, yeah, because that's got, first of all, I think you got to go safety first, you know, you know, and that's where you want to err on the side of safety, of course. And you probably want to have your decision makers, really, you know, you don't want to have too many, for consistency's sake, you'd probably only want to have, you know, I don't know, two or three, depending upon your, you know, your staffing abilities to 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 monitor that. I think that's an excellent idea, though, if everyone has those those sheets that they basically, I've got to go to work today. It's, you know, it's such and such a day, it's it's 8:45 AM. I'm answering these questions like this. Oh, I've got to call into Tara and tell her, or, you know, this is how I'm feeling or something. But yeah, I could see how that would get in execution. That's tricky. That's tricky. And I don't know where where who's, is anybody giving out kind of guidance on that? I mean, I guess we are alone in employers. No.
Well, the guidance is, yes, this will seem daunting. It will get easier over time. Certain of the symptoms will be very indicative of COVID, like the loss of smell or taste, while others such as runny nose might require some additional probing that will uncover that it's a runny nose and the person hasn't come into contact with anyone that they know of that is, has tested positive for COVID. So again, make a determination, and it might also be in conjunction with the employee's own comfort level and self-monitoring of symptoms. But, you know, certain things, it will be easier to say, stay home, like a fever. Certain of those symptoms are going to be very concerning, and even in the absence of a test or perhaps even some of the more serious symptoms, we would just encourage the employee to err on the side of caution and then also work on having telework options for them to pursue. But so there's going to be a fair amount of of decision making, preparation for contingencies and the like. But, you know, it's it's unfortunate that there really is, there's no real algorithm for making a decision where these kinds of things are concerned. It's really truly case by case and very person intensive.
Is 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 your sense that like there's more testing available now for people who need, you know, can call their doctor and get a test, it's easier? I mean, you know, in some places in the in the state, you know, like where my son is in Queens, for example, he can kind of go get a test if he wants one now. I don't know that's the case.
Sure, Queens is a, yeah, Queens is a hotspot, right? So I think it's one of the 10 hotspots where a testing center has specifically been set up downstate. I I probably know as much as anyone on this call about the availability of testing in that it's becoming more widely available. But, you know, there really hasn't, I I don't believe been a true push to have each and every citizen tested. I know now you can obtain a testing without, for instance, a doctor's order. But I still think, you know, again, we as an employer haven't incorporated that into our protocols for recalling people that you must come to us with a clean test. This is just me speaking personally. The tests are great for right now. You get tested today, you're clear, but tomorrow something, there could be exposure. So it's a moving target. So I guess that's the other thing is, is, you know, at what point do we, if we were to ask people for to get tested, how much of it would really be helpful for their work for us versus just for personal understanding of of infection rates?
Right. Does the reduced staffing level? Will that make it easier to encourage people to stay home? In other words, you that the, there'd be another next man up, that'd be easier to find the next person up if if someone has to stay home because not many, not as many people are coming in. Does that make sense?
That would be the hope, but I think the concern that's been expressed among the supervisory team is how much advance notice is being given or is allowed to be given or can be given to employees who otherwise aren't expected to report on any given day. But that would be not unusual during regular times if someone calls in sick and we need to go down a list of if anyone can come in to take their place.
Right, you almost have to be on call, like an on-call list, or I guess if you're not, yeah. I know you can't probably can't do that for every position, but.
I'm wondering about, I know that this seems like something that we need the legal advice on as well, that you don't have a liability as a supervisor or in human resources to be making this call on a decision of whether someone's healthy or not healthy and being held responsible later. I mean, it just seems like some, there should be some language somewhere that you're all doing the best that you can do. And I also wonder about that amount of paper and whether you want to some, if, I don't know how you do how people sign in that they're coming into work and everything, and if there's a way, I know that there's some programs out there that there people are including these questions as a piece of their, you know, they're almost their timesheet, but electronically it is. You know, that would then send it to whoever it needed to be sent to.
And I can certainly look into that. It does make good sense. Our folks have gotten used to clocking in and out remotely using Paylocity or our payroll program, which does have a survey component to it, whether or not there's something that could be built in and scheduled to go out as needed or as scheduled. I'm just, I'm not that technically savvy to know how to create something like that and also have it be something that is secure and confidential from a data retention standpoint. I think the other stumbling block for me, just logistically, is providing access to those questionnaires for whether it's the supervisor or Ike or myself to review. So while there might be an easy way for employees using technology to answer a survey, the next thing would be who and how can those answers be accessed and reviewed on a daily basis to be compliant? So that we're not just blindly kind of asking for responses, but not actually reviewing them, because we do have to affirm that we've reviewed them.
Which that may be a fixable tech thing from a tech point of view. I I'm sure you've thought about this, is that, you know, you know, the confidentiality piece, that sounds like something the lawyers might need to pass on. If everyone is, if they're giving you updated of their, you know, health every day, I I'm not sure where, you know, how that stands confidential wise, HIPAA wise, what, I mean, you're not releasing it to the public, so. You know, but I I'd want to hear from them on that, you know. Does that something that is technologically feasible? I mean, Don, is Don here?
I am here, yes, and it is, although we the simplest, easiest way we have set up currently, I did a test run and it is on our 365 Outlook client, and it's it's unsure of the, we're unsure of how secure it is, and we're just not quite sure it's up to the standards of the HIPAA security that we might need.
Right, which was why, even though the, to the, to your point about the paper, it's just, you know, we still do a fair amount with paper, with personnel files and so forth. So there's a, it's, there's a certain precedent that's already in place for that. And I think also just at least to begin from a process standpoint to make sure that we are capturing and having access to. And also, quite frankly, for our staff that don't have the electronic access themselves, paper just seems to be the most barrier-free way of obtaining the data because not of all of our employees have the electronic access themselves. So we do have a handful of people that are still doing things more low-tech.
Do we have any sense of what other retailers or libraries are doing as far as the screening?
I don't know. Go ahead.
I was going to say, I think the questionnaire is very common. And the the one thing that we've opted not to do that is also very common is the is to take the temperature. At least nearby, so.
Is it, what was the thought behind that?
You know, it's, to Tara's point about symptoms, you can be infective and be asymptomatic, so it's not always a good measure, and then it is, it's not an invasive procedure, but it it is one extra step that it's it's problematic and possibly not useful information. So we'll ask the question about about body temperature, but we won't be administering the test ourselves.
Well, that's, this sounds like it's going to be a difficult area that needs to be ironed out as far as making these determinations on a daily basis.
Yes.
Yes.
Tara, was there anything else you wanted to address?
Specific to the screening? I know, other than than what, yeah, what we've already discussed.
Any other issue?
Uh, no.
Okay. Jen F, did you have any particular concerns?
They've all been expressed. A lot. Yeah, I I mean, and I'm glad Katie brought up about liability, that that was one of my concerns, was making a judgment call on either side of the decision and and being responsible for that legally.
So Ike, what what is helpful, obviously, I I'm going to need to review this whole new document, which I would imagine everybody else is going to want to too. But it's also possible that the insurance carrier, the attorneys are also going to make changes, would, which, how would you like us to proceed?
What I, I will get it, I'm kind of tongue tied because it's so it's kind of overwhelming, overwhelming process, but right, if you could review it and if you have particular questions, because I know you all have great insight, and if you and we want it to be as clear and as comprehensive, but also not super overwhelming to people. So if you have questions or comments or concerns, if you could share those. And in the meantime, we'll have, let's see if we can get it reviewed by the lawyers and by the insurers. And then hopefully come back together either at next Monday's regular meeting, or if we could, if there's an opportunity to schedule us another special meeting closer to the end of this week to see if we can't take some some action on approving it.
Okay.
And and Ike, who who is on the safety plan committee?
So that is Tara and me, Jen Ogradowski, Jen Ferris, Rick Taurus, Laura Clark, and Don Clinton. So it's the leadership team.
And it does, we didn't get into all the levels of cleaning and everything that I'm sure is being outlined in here. Does Rick, I can't see anymore who's here and who isn't here. Does Rick have anything in particular that he wants us to be aware of?
Rick, I don't think he's got his microphone on or whatever he does.
No, I I'm listening. Like Ike said, it's very overwhelming. You know, we're trying to offer the best choices that are both environmentally and staff and patron safe. Plus having backup options because it's all about supplies out there. You can, you can choose something, but, you know, doing the EPA approved, disinfect it, and the amount of times and the levels, I think the leadership team has worked really close together. And, you know, in reality, the best thing you can do is keep washing your hands. But we're doing extra levels of cleaning and we'll re, we'll really work together as a team in all departments and at all levels to keep, just keep cleaning. I mean, there's only so many things that you can do. We can't guarantee things, but we know we have some backups, we know we have some supplies and really will use the train the trainer approach and, you know, keep working it out.
Okay.
So I'd say at this, at this point in time, it's going to be a fluid thing that, you know, once we open up and expand, will become more challenging. But we'll work together.
Yeah, I would, I would agree. It's definitely an all hands on deck situation. And so we've set up protocol where staff are cleaning their own areas in addition to having the cleaners clean them and disinfect them nightly, and that we've got, you know, people cleaning multiple times during a shift using the same products that will be used to disinfect at the end of the day. And again, and throughout the day.
Um, and is it, is it possible to see, for us to see at our meeting next week, a draft of some of these guidelines for patrons that you're working on with the?
Absolutely, yeah.
And are the bathrooms, do you, do the bathrooms then are beyond that space of the community room?
That's correct.
There a sense of if patrons, are you just going to have sanitizing stations? Or are you going to want people to wash their hands?
So there is, as you walk in the front door, there is a a hand sanitizer dispenser, and then there is another one as you walk into the community room. So before we would get to even a spot where where you might encounter a staff member other than somebody who might be by the door, there are at least two opportunities for hand sanitizer.
You also, that the narrowness of that hallway is going to be an issue.
It's one-way traffic.
Right, so the, but the, it means the staff and things can't then use those restrooms either when people would potentially be coming through, right?
No, because staff can enter the the corridor from the opposite side, so that, so the main part of the building will be closed to the public. But there's a door at the end of, from the main reading room into the corridor that's beyond the, near the community. All right. I know there's a lot to discuss. We have another meeting in about five minutes. For the budget presentation. For the budget presentation. Frank, I'm sorry, you're muted, do you?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah, I was just saying you have another meeting in, in a few minutes. So would you keep us? Informed when you hear from the lawyers and the carrier? And then I guess you'll have a, you think you'll have a final, final draft, maybe. End of the week or something or?
I hope so, yeah.
Okay. Does anybody else have anything else they'd like to add? I know Ike has a meeting, he's got to start in just a couple of minutes. Okay, with that, I, we're going to bring this meeting to a close. It's adjourned. Thank you all. Thanks Ike. Thanks, everybody for working so hard on this. I know it's really difficult. To be continued.
Yeah, thanks, everyone. Thank you.